Just reviewing the minutes, listed out the, I guess, the questions and topics that we discussed with CT last month. And then there was the inclusion of the public comments. And then some discussion from Kevin, but there really wasn't any, I guess, documentation of our responses to those questions that were posed by Elisa.
Okay. We can zero in on the language if you need, it seems like that didn't-
It just seems like for future reference, if we could look back, or not look back, include kind of our responses to what the questions that were posed in the discussion.
Specifically the questions and not like every discussion, so that's, we're trying to streamline it. So, but-
Because questions are in there, but there's no response to them.
I got you. So maybe we can just zero in on the individual questions and then-
A summary of our response or discussion.
If you want to make a media motion with those directions, if you're so inclined.
I don't know if anybody else felt the same way, I don't know. I don't want to make more work for anybody, but it just kind of seems a little open-ended when you read it.
Okay.
That was my impression, anyway.
We can't hear you right here, sorry.
Sorry. The comments I made was, in our meeting minutes, it have includes the questions and the topics for the discussion that CT brought to us last month.
Okay.
But it doesn't really summarize our responses to those questions.
Oh, okay.
So I was just asking for a summary response to those questions.
Thank you.
Green, is that better?
Yes. Thank you.
That's the value of the minutes, is to hear what the discussion, how the discussion resulted, so I appreciate your comment.
Right, so, just for future references.
Otherwise it's just an agenda item.
Kevin, did we get anything from the Highland Country Club?
We did.
Okay. And that met the requirements that we had?
Tim and I discussed that. Tim secured the document, and we got everything we needed.
Does anybody else have anything else on the minutes?
No, that's good point.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with the exception to add a summary of the responses from planning ocean numbers to the questions that were posed as part of the discussion with CT consultants.
Can you do that, Mr. Chairman?
I don't know, can I make a motion?
Yes.
I'll second it. Anything else? Do we have a motion in second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
For order. Next is a consolidation plan for 415 River Road. Kevin's going to give a brief discussion.
Yeah, so this lot, there's several parcels that this property owner owns there, and it was, you notice all the flag stems that lead down to River Road. That's how it was designed, developed some years ago. This particular owner bought several of those parcels, and they're looking to consolidate the small rectangular portion in the front, adjacent to River Road, to the main lot. They, the rationale for this is, they're actually, the Hannah, the small lot that's surrounded by the lot owned by Bean, essentially wants to purchase a little bit of property off of Bean, some of those flag stems. The flag stems are no longer required as an individual lot access, since he combined all the lots, or is combining all the lots. And therefore, this is kind of the first step, to consolidate this lot, and then next month, the applicant Hannah is intending on purchasing portions of the flag stems that are adjacent to him, and at that point, the larger lot will have enough runage with the consolidated lot to achieve a compliant lot.
If they're not consolidating, this being-
Personal property. No, that's not part of the consolidation.
I'll make a motion to approve the consolidation plan for Nolan and Michelle Bean at 415 River Road.
Second?
Anything else? Okay, we have a motion in second.
Really, sorry, motion in the second, do you want to just follow that up with a full?
Right.
All I-
So, motion is to approve the consolidation lot for Nolan and Michelle Bean at 415 River Road. Do we have a motion in the second?
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Just for record purposes, was there any other discussion needed?
Yeah, I asked.
Okay, thank you.
That's my, sorry.
Thank you.
Next up, any good update, consideration of Phase Two Development Plan ordinance, or unified development plan ordinance? Discussion on accessory uses and some regulations.
Just one quick, our typical spiel at the beginning, we're speaking tonight about signs and accessory uses, so if you have something else, save it for the next meeting or the following meeting till we discuss that, but we're speaking specifically, any questions tonight on accessory uses and signs? Alisa will prompt the crowd when there's opportunity to speak. And lastly, if everybody could turn their microphone on, the green is go, so speak clearly into it for recording purposes. And I think that's all I have at this point. Oh, just hold, apparently it's, there you go. It's on, green is go.
Okay, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, I am Alisa W. Rogers with CT Consultants, with me this evening is Frank Twizus, who's also with CT, and thank you so much for having us here this evening. As Kevin just said, tonight we will quickly run through the zoning ordinance update process. I'll review two draft zoning ordinance sections, one is the sign section, and the other is temporary and accessory use regulations, and then we will end with next steps. I will stop several times during this presentation to answer questions and to hear from community members. So the zoning ordinance update is progressing in roughly four phases. The first phase includes an analysis of existing conditions, as well as a thorough examination of the existing zoning subdivision ordinance. At the end of that phase, we prepare the diagnostic report, and that is currently on the city's website. We are currently in Phase Two, which is creating the revised regulations. The major changes from your current code are being fleshed out, and as I said, we are currently in Phase Two. In Phase Three, we will complete all of the amendments and align the zoning map with any new zoning districts. And then Phase Four is adoption. We have added additional opportunities for community members to discuss the proposed changes and ask questions, and those are on Thursdays at Fort Thomas Coffee, so tomorrow. The first session is from 10 to 11:45, and then we also have an evening session from 6 to 8. Please feel free to drop in anytime during those hours. If there's no standard agenda, it's really an open opportunity for all of us to have a conversation. At the last public session, approximately 10 community members attended over the two sessions. We discussed the Fort Thomas Avenue overlay district, specifically the development and residential contextual standards. The parcels included in the Fort Thomas overlay district, the midway district in terms of it being on the national register, the location of parking areas in the R3 district, which are your multifamily districts, the large number of residential lots that don't conform to the minimum lot with requirements currently in the zoning ordinance. And then truly, we had a conversation about the implications of that for rebuilding on those non-conforming lots after tragedies. We talked about the history and the applicability of the existing central business district, local historic district, the proposed Tower Park Historic Overlay District, and the existing deed restrictions, and the U.S. Secretary's standards for rehabilitation. So again, tomorrow at Fort Thomas Coffee, from 10 to 11:45, and from 6 to 8. So this evening, we're going to start with signs. Effective sign regulation must accommodate multiple distinct priorities, and it's really a balancing act. We're balancing constitutional issues with residents' concerns about sign proliferation, and then we're dealing with the fact that businesses actually need signs, signs in order for their customers to find them. Today, we have, throughout all of these sessions, we have covered a huge number of topics in a great amount of detail. Believe it or not, the conversation tonight is going to be more detailed and more complex, so hold on, here we go. Signs fall under the First Amendment, so municipalities have to be careful not to be overly strict with signage. The legal landscape is difficult to navigate, and in the last eight years, we've had two major Supreme Court cases that have further delineated how communities can regulate signs, both permanent and temporary. So let's start with this legal landscape without going too deeply into case law, so we're just going to sort of go across the surface. So as I said, signs are protected by the First Amendment. The First Amendment protects content that generally allows municipalities to regulate in terms of time, place, and manner. You're going to get really tired of hearing that. In terms of time, you can regulate the hours of illumination or displays. For place, you can regulate the location, meaning the zoning districts, you can regulate setbacks, the pedestrian clearance, or like projecting signs, the distance that signs have to be for residential districts. In terms of manner, what we're talking about is the size and types of signs, and we can prohibit signs that flash, blink, rotate, scroll, all that crazy stuff. In 2015, Supreme Court ruled in Reed versus the town of Gilbert that any content-based distinctions in sign regulations are unconstitutional. Essentially, if you have to regu-, if you have to read the sign to regulate it, you can't do it. Now that is a little bit of an oversimplification, but that is essentially the rule.
Alisa, could you repeat that, please, that we just said about the rule?
Yes, so the rule is, if you have to read the sign to regulate it, that it's not permitted, because the regulation is then content-based.
Thank you.
And as I said, that's a little bit of an oversimplification, but that's essentially the rule. So we're going to start with a quick tour of signs, just so that we hopefully all are on the same page for vocabulary. This is a ground sign, meaning it has a monumental face. This is a pole sign, essentially the name of it, has two, one or two poles supporting it. These are all permanent freestanding signs. These are pylon signs. These are essentially pole signs where they have covered up the pole with some sort of cover, like the one that you see on Fifth Third Bank, or the one for that office building on US 27. These are wall signs, pretty easy. These are projecting signs, so these are essentially pedestrian-oriented signs that you see for the most part in the central business district, being downtown and the midway. These are awning or canopy signs, and typically the signage is going to be on the valance, which is that vertical portion that you see. Window signs, huge issue. And we go back a little bit, so both, in both of these situations, the window sign is applied to the window, but a window sign can also be something that says, you know, "now serving advertisers," or something like that. That is also a window sign. So it may not be permanently applied, it's just something that they're putting up at that point in time. So talking about temporary signs, these are freestanding ones. Everything from the feather sign that you see on the extreme left, to the, you know, the freestanding sign that you see in the yard of the church, or the sign that people put in the yards that say "Drive Like Your Kids Live Here." All of those are temporary freestanding signs. And then these are building-mounted banners or temporary signs. These are pedestrian signs. They can be anything from the A-frame signs that the city points out, puts out, that says "Your Farmer's Market Today", just a little A-frame sign that sits in front of the parlor in the midway. Those are all pedestrian signs. Again, really not geared toward vehicular movement, but for the pedestrians on the sidewalk. Continuing our quick tour, these are changeable copy signs, which they separate as distinct category from electronic message centers, which we'll talk about, I think, a fair amount tonight. So these are the old-fashioned ones, where you've got to mechanically or by hand put in the sign. And then again, these are the electronic message centers, the one at the library, the one at Fort Thomas Plaza. So I'm going to stop right here and ask the commission, any questions about our legal landscape and our sign tour?
When's a permanent sign become a, or a temporary sign become a permanent sign? Do we define temporary?
We do, and essentially it is something that is made of a material that is not meant to be permanent, so cloth, vinyl, those kinds of things, and we actually, the regulation says it's currently drafted, that prohibit one of those signs from being permanently mounted.
So we got anything in the regulation about how long an temporary sign can be up?
So that's actually something we will get to when we get to the temporary signs, but as it's currently drafted, the answer is no, in most situations. It is emphatically no if it's currently drafted in the residential districts. So there is no time limit on those temporary signs. And ones that say, "Drive Like Your Kids Live Here," or, you know, "Mr. Smith in my landscaping," or, you know, "My son is graduating from high school," all of those things are temporary signs in residential districts, and could be there forever.
And then convenience stores, I mean, I used to think they went with Al glass in the front because of the daylight, but no, it's so they can pass through the inside with temporary signs, or this week's special or anything, do we regulate that in any way?
So as it's currently drafted, 25% of the window area can be window signs, whether it's, you know, like what you see at the parlor, which is nicely applied, or whether it's, you know, "now serving," whatever. So we are regulating whether it's mounted. Okay, so in terms of the regulations that we'll be discussing tonight, the way it's currently organized, as all of our sections, we have an intent, we had a very long exhaustive glossary of what those terms mean. When you are administering assigned ordinance, how you define those terms is almost as important as the regulations themselves, as we, as we just started to have that conversation right now. There's actually like four pages in this draft to talk about how do you measure signs. The signs are then broken down by non-residential and residential districts. We've added regulations for murals, which we will talk about, prohibited signs, design standards, and then your standard administrative procedures. So we're going to start off by talking about signs in the residential and conservation districts. So unfortunately, your existing ordinance has some inconsistencies in terms of what's permitted, and so we'll talk about that as well. In terms of your single-family homes, your detached dwellings in your cluster districts, your residential care facilities, they're allowed to have, if this is currently drafted, one wall sign that does not need a permit, that is two square feet. Essentially, that came from your home occupation regulations that currently allow that. Again, we're not, that's talking about content, so now we're just saying, anyone can have that. In terms of the ground signs for residential subdivisions, sorry guys, no changes are proposed. That's exactly your existing regulations, they're allowed to have one per development entrance, 20 square feet, can only be externally illuminated, and the maximum height is eight feet. In terms of developments for multifamily developments or single-family attached, you currently are allowed to have for a ground sign 40 square feet, which is a lot, so I'm proposing to bring it down to 25, again, externally illuminated. The height is currently 10 feet in some places and eight feet in others in your ordinance. The inconsistencies are troubling, and so I'm proposing just to keep the eight feet that's in one location. In terms of the wall signs for multifamily and single-family attached, you have a regulation that says one square foot per linear quarter building frontage. Again, that could be a lot of signage in terms of wall signs for multifamily, proposing to bring that down to 25 square feet, again, with only external illumination. And then in terms of non-residential uses within your residential districts or your conditional uses, those would be things like schools and churches, one wall sign at 16 square feet with only external illumination, and then a ground sign. Again, the ground sign is where defining it are those things with monuments. So what you should notice first and foremost is a pole sign or a pylon sign would not be permitted. Only thing that would be permitted for those residential, non-residential uses, conditional uses, would be a ground sign. And again, there's some conflicting language in your code about what the size of those can be. Some of them, in one place it says 25 square feet, in another place it says, again, the height would be the same. So as we started having these meetings on Thursday, I think, not exaggerating, when I say every single solitary time we've had those meetings, someone has brought up these signs. They've started proliferating on your R3 properties. And I actually, Frank's laughing, but I think this is literally the only thing I've talked about every time. So the first question that I'm going to pose to you tonight is, and they're small, I mean, they're not even worth it about 12 or 16 square feet, but what you'll notice is they are, these developments tend to have fairly small front setbacks, and they're plopped down in the front of them, and then they are pole signs. So my first question to you is, you know, do you want to prohibit those pole and pylon signs in these, for these R3 properties? I mean, if you aren't concerned about them, we can leave them, but as I said, we've, I've heard a lot of conversation about it.
What was that conversation?
People hate them. Universally. So we could do a couple things, we, I mean, and, but let me point out to you. The signs that exist today, even if we outlaw them tomorrow, stay. Because they have non-conforming rights, and there's nothing we can do about that. I mean, your only hope is that somebody plows into it and, you know, they have choices. And I'm also being flip about that, I would never want anyone to do that. That would be the only way it could be, then be done, so-
It's very important to renounce that.
So in some ways, we're going, we're, you know, we're dealing with this after the horse started left farm. But there are some of them out there, I actually could tour today through town, and there are a fair number who still don't have them. So first question, are you okay with the fact that they're poles?
What is the height, if you have an idea what those heights are, are those, those are less than eight feet from a side angle?
Yeah, they're, they're, you know, generally about six, six feet or so. So that's the other thing, is we can bring them down, you can bring the height down to four or five feet, because part of it is the fact that they're, you have limited front setback, they're plopped in the middle of it, and they're fairly tall, well, not that tall, but they're disrupting the sidelines, and I think that's what people are reacting to. So, that could be my next question, you know, if you're, if you're, no matter what you want to do with the actual structure, do you want to reduce the height?
I don't, I don't think they're real, sorry, I don't think they're really necessary in every multi-building, multi, building we have in Fort Thomas, because they keep popping up every once, so we're going to, you know, it's just going to get worse.
Right. I mean, that is your option. You could, you could say no ground signs in your R3, that is also an option.
I mean, I can see a big apartment complex, not in Fort Thomas, having a sign saying, you know, calls for, you know, being built, you know, big apartments, but these, I mean- Well, you're looking at square, I mean, you know. But it's so hot, I mean, the apartments, you don't need to advertise really, once, once one opens up. You don't need to have signs in front of every building saying, hey, it's an apartment.
So you'll notice that I'm using the zoning district R3, which is the ones that proliferate through, that are mostly through on Fort Thomas Avenue, on Highland Avenue, instead of the R5s, which are, tend to be larger developments. So that's why I'm specifically only speaking about R3, because of precisely the distinction that you're making.
I agree, we shouldn't have them R3s.
I agree. When one person moves into those communities, they stay a long time, why do they need advertising? It's only how many units are in there anyway.
I mean, they vary, I think some of them vary, they're strange.
One, by, by the, few of them have more.
I mean, I think it's supposed to be a branding of the manager. Well, you can't restrict the message, though, there you go.
So the other option is, just say no ground signs? Okay. But you're okay with a wall sign?
Yeah, I, I, I mean, the issue is, I mean, you also, just the pole sign specifically, if you made it a monument sign or a panel, you know, it's not going to change the, the size, the massing, the location.
It'll bring it down, it'll bring it down.
Well, wouldn't necessarily, you would just fill in the void below the sign.
Right, but I mean, we could say, that would be my next question, is do we want to then reduce the height? But if we don't, we're not going to have them, then we don't need to ask that question. Okay.
What would be the size of the sign on the building? Would it be a 24-square foot or 25-square foot, if it was on the building? I'm sorry, Alisa, I catch up card there, I just-
That's okay. Too many numbers, I need to look back. So what's being proposed right now for the wall sign would be 25 square feet, which I think is fairly reachable. Look at the signs. Do y'all disagree?
Buildings on the corner lot, would they allow one per street frontage?
So if you get rid of the ground signs, then the answer would be we wouldn't have any.
With wall signs, are they allowed one per street frontage on the corner lot, or is it just one, one sign per property?
If I remember correctly, the way it's currently drafted, you're allowed, you're on a corner or any hat, or have two frontages, whether it's, you know, a corner lot, or a three lot, or whatever else, you can, you can designate a primary and a secondary, and the secondary can be 40% of area of the primary. So the answer, that's a very long-winded answer, is to say yes. So in terms of our next conversation, let's talk about electronic message centers. So these are, for the most part, replacing those changeable copy signs, those ones where you used to go in and say, you change the letter spot, you know. These are three that are existing, the one on the left is the high school, the one in the middle is the library, and then the one on the right is Woodfield Elementary. And Kevin was nice enough to go out and measure these for me, and they range in size between, and, and we'll talk, again, this is talking about measuring the sign area. We are measuring what you see, where you actually see signage. So for example, where the library is, where you have that nice finial and all of that at the back, that is not signage. So they range in size between roughly 22 and 28 square feet, so they're not really that large. The one downstairs is 16 square feet?
Yes, it's actually one of the smallest ones.
The smallest one's right.
There are actually two signs, though, there's the one with the name of the institution, and then the electric sign.
Correct, correct, and what I'm talking about, so the, and that's partly why the one that says Campbell County, the school district is actually slightly larger, and same for the school. But in terms of the actual message center itself, they range between about 22 and 28 square feet. So let's talk a little bit about what you're allowed to do with an electronic message board. So again, keep in mind, we cannot in any way regulate content. That tends to be a topic every time this comes up in meetings. So we can regulate, you mean, character considerations by specified, which is only districts. We can only permit them on certain sign types. There are some places, believe it or not, who only allow them on wall signs, they don't allow them on ground signs. And then you can actually control what percent of the sign has digital content. So like, for example, on- So like, for example, on, you know, the one for the library, a good portion of that sign is the digital sign, it is the digital area. Same for a high school. Some clients that I have, you say it could be no more than 25% of the sign, or 50% of the sign, or something like that. You can regulate the message whole time. Typically, it's between 8 and 10 seconds. You can regulate the transitions, and then you can also regulate brightness and legibility. So when we first started having these out, out there, that was a huge issue. Now technology has come along such that it's much easier to deal with regulating in terms of ambient light and that kind of thing. So that's much less of a concern.
So I have a question about the, the lighting intensity. How would you enforce the lighting intensity? So you would act out with the lighting here?
Yes, you would.
Have you ever done that, Kevin? I think we've, in the past, we've asked the manufacturer, or the, I guess, personally installer, to provide us with something. There was one that somebody had, had some concerns at one point about, and I had reached out to them, and they gave me a limit, you know, intensity. I don't remember any specifics to that whatsoever, to be quite honest, other than, I think it met our regulation, whatever we have in place currently. And the, the argument kind of went away. It was one of those, it was a new sign, and it was bright for the resident that was relatively close to it, and they really never brought up the argument again. You know, so I think it was just something to adjust to, to be quite honest.
So your current regulations for electronic, electronic message boards in your residential districts for conditional uses allow 40 square feet per side, which is large, and 10 feet in height, and the school with about 10 feet, just to give you, you know, a frame of reference. The sign can only be operated from 6:00 AM until 11:00 PM. It can't glare onto adjacent properties used for residential purposes. Can be no plus or minus 5 feet to any property line. Has to be landscaped. If it malfunctions, there are certain things that it has to meet. I have added in that it can't continuously scroll, it can't spin, it can't flash, it can't have all of those sorts of allusory movement kinds of things. And then I've added in additional standards in terms of that illumination that we were talking about. And basically, you can't exceed 0.3 foot candles above the Columbia light level. And then I have actually listed in here how that's measured. So it would give some folks, so the ability to understand what that means. The transition times, it can fade or dissolve, but it can't have any other types of effects. And then I've added that they can't utilize any audio devices. So we have several questions that are important for this. The first being, you know, should we decrease the size from 40 square feet to something more like 28 square feet or 30 square feet, especially considering that tends to be the norm within the community. And we're talking, and when we're talking about that, we're talking about the area of the digital sign.
I think that, I mean, four, four, right, you should have fired it. That is 30 feet.
What's the big square?
It's the school.
Which is how many square feet?
It's about 28 square feet.
Yeah, so it should be 28.
Yeah, so it's 28, okay. And then here's the much larger issue. So currently, your electronic message boards are only allowed for public schools and parochial schools. I don't know how it was expanded to parochial, but the public happens, because essentially it's a school district and it's exempt from zoning. So that's how they ended up with them. And Kevin may be able to tell us how it was extended to parochial schools.
There was a request by St. Thomas to come before, they came before this board to add and modify that language, which got approved by this board and council. I think the idea was that, why should they be left out of, when the public schools, which we can regulate, had them, we felt it obvious to, to allow them to have them. That particular sign went before our Board of Adjustment, it was added as a conditional use in a residential zone, as where most of these, most of the schools are, and the Board of Adjustment approved that sign.
So now we are faced with, are we going to further open that up to other community facilities and institutions? As it's currently drafted, that is what is drafted, and we define, as in the ordinance currently, community facilities as schools, public or private, colleges, places of worship, public facilities such as the government building, such as the City Hall building, public parks, hospitals, community centers. So the question before you is, what should be the, you know, moving forward, who should be allowed to have an electronic message center? Given that we have already opened the door?
The state has already opened the door. We, or beyond us.
Well, the state has a community ownership, and then we opened it further by, I am parochial.
My personal opinion is just, I'm okay with it with the schools only. You know, I'm not a big fan of driving down the avenue and looking at a bunch of electronic signs. I know the library had the same exemption that, that, or that the schools did, but I just don't think they're very attractive. Are you gonna go and check the messages on them every week and make sure that they're not scrolling, or, or, you know, fireworks sent the 4th of July and all that kind of stuff? Do you even wanna get into that?
I'd rather not get into that, no. Of course, we're not regulating content, other than like the flash, you know, what we can regulate. I will say, just as a side note, Mr. Paylor did email me, couldn't make it tonight, he wanted to state his displeasure with electronic signs in general as well. But I wanted to put that out there.
I think it takes away from our city and what we're trying to accomplish here. We're trying to keep our city looking the way it is, more historic, and I think it takes away.
So my, oh, my. So then my recommendation to you would be that you need to close the door for the parochial schools.
Well, in instances in Thomas, they, if I remember correctly, Kevin, they didn't approach it as a school, they approached it as a place of worship.
I think...
Is that correct?
I don't think that's correct. I think, we, I think the language that we added was for schools, and it, it's in front of the school. Now, does it have, I don't know if it has a message periodically for the church, I don't know.
Yes. Kevin, it does say, it's a St. Thomas school. It says St. Thomas school. It does say in church, it says St. Thomas.
But it's physically in front of the school. But I think they were going out in an angle of, if they play some worship.
Maybe on Easter, but not, not continually, does not have church signs at mass times. If you go now, I do not believe you would say that.
They do want caveins, though.
It does, because I walk past it every day. You say it has a fight in it? I might not dismiss it. It did, on Mother's Day.
We can hold off on public comment until the appropriate time. Go ahead.
It does scroll, it does have mass signs on it, more than just Easter, more than that, it does.
I guess if you consider, if we consider the case where it could be permitted as a conditional use, like it was in the St. Thomas case, for any, you know, basically any institution under residential district could be a conditional use, so that's...
And what would the conditions be?
I mean, obviously, you have, it actually has to comply with everything here. I think, to me, it kind of depends on the context of what's surrounding, and how close is the adjacent residence, those kinds of things. I don't know, it's somewhat subjective, I realize that.
So we could do that, we could make it a conditional use. One of the conditions could be that it has to be X number of feet from another one, which is an objective standard. You can also say that it has to be X number of feet from a property residentially used or resident, or zoned residential. Those are objective standards.
Do we, we don't have a, do we have a setback requirement for ground signs?
We do, we do, or you do.
Mostly 5 feet for...
It's mostly 5 feet, yeah.
From property line? Yeah, I mean, you know...
So it's not huge. So I mean, those are, and we, that's something else you could add as a condition, but I, the reason I ask that question to you directly is, you know, what are you attempting to regulate and to accomplish? And when you add something as a conditional use, you are saying that I'm accepting, you as the city, I am accepting, you're accepting the impacts of that, and under very limited circumstances, would you say no?
I mean, I could, I could envision, like, I just, I could envision for the, the Parker Memorial Parkway, that they would want to put a, an electronic sign up there saying, pickleball tournament tonight, and these are what's going on, and, you know, that's kind of, I can envision that. And, you know, I, I just, to me, to some degree, it's, it's an equity thing. The city can do what it wants, or the school district can do what it wants, but then if it's another institution, how do you draw that line without being, we don't want any more, you know, and saying... For the record, it says St. Thomas School and Parish.
Right, yeah.
Oh, I just blew up that one.
So, I mean, the 2 subdivisions, political subdivisions that you just mentioned, the city and the schools, are exempt.
Right.
I mean, we have no...
I, I understand, I understand legally why it is...
Right, so, you know, but once you've opened the door to parochial schools, then it becomes much more of an equity issue, right?
I mean, the YMCA has one.
Which is a community facility, no doubt about it.
The library.
Well, the library is...
Again, I, I understand, it, for example, I'm just saying, you know, it's kind of about where you go.
So let me do this. I understand your position. Let me see if I can draft some conditional use standards that would make this more palatable, and we'll continue the discussion, how's that? And then maybe we can even plot, like along Fort Thomas Avenue, where all the churches are, and see if it's really as big of an issue as you think it is. Something like that. Or whether we're gonna be in a situation where if we say it's X number of feet, has to be separation, then we're gonna have an issue or something like that. So let's see if we can do that. How would that sound?
I mean, I'm not a big fan of proliferating them, but at the same time, you know, I don't want to open stuff to a, to a, to a...
So, we've already talked a little bit about what the appropriate size for wall signs is, and we've already come down to about 25 square feet. So at this point, I want to stop and take any public comment that's okay with y'all about what we've discussed.
Anybody have any questions?
John, can you speak, just so we can hear you, please?
We didn't see it. One thing that you were saying, one of the phrases that caught my attention greatly was the number of seconds in between flashing signs. Having several family members who are prone to seizures from flashing signs, or strobe lights, or things, you're saying, well, maybe 8 or 10. That needs to be nailed down, and I think it needs to be nailed down with some medical back, backup to legitimize it. Not to say kind of 8 seconds, kind of 10 seconds, there's a pretty big difference when you know people with seizure disorders.
Right, and, and the ordinance has, the reason I use those 2 terms, in one section it says 8 seconds, in another section it says 10, and it's 10 for the residential and 8 in the commercial. And those are fairly standard times?
I would just ask for some, maybe some medical input on that.
Okay.
And of course, people with seizures don't have them with the same standards, and I know, back in the day, when strobe lights were kind of popular among high school and young adults, it was a big issue, that they had to blast out front, that there were strobe lights, don't go in essentially, for fear of the seizures. Another one is talking about the freestanding signs in front of the apartment units, the ones that are popping up. Did I understand correctly that at this point, if you say no more signs, that those that exist would still be able to exist? Am I correct on that? Then why are you trying to get rid of parochial school signs? Why are we not saying, it's there, it's been approved, it's been requested, it's been approved, it exists? Why would that not be grandfathered in the way the courtyard is grandfathered in?
It would be.
It's just no one else would be allowed to have them, if they changed the ordinance now. But anyone who already has an electronic sign would be allowed to keep it with the same non-conforming rights as the, the signs in the R3 properties.
I appreciate that clarification. On that same, or similar note, and I apologize if that, I, I mean, truthfully, I zoned out when you said, get rid of the parochial signs. I mean, I'm telling you, that is painful. That is painful.
That's what my argument was, is St. Thomas already has a sign.
Right, right. And you don't say, parochial. I mean, seriously, that, I understand the difference between parochial school and public school. But I don't understand, trying to make one be non-existent, which is essentially what it is.
If they're grandfathered in, all's good. Yep, they're all grandfathered in, you would never, ever be able to do anything to them.
Good to know, good to know. There's another thing related to that. I, by the way, most of the times that I see, like, throwing this missile, or thank the teacher, or thanks, often those are coming, or whatever, you know, things like that. If you can't regulate content, and there's clearly an objection to getting mass signs, I don't remember everything, and maybe because I know what the mass times are, that seems regulating content.
But I don't...
I personally, and I'm only speaking for myself, if you want to delineate church from school, I don't have as big a problem with that as delineating parochial school from public school. So if they end up saying, but you can't have the mass times, that's the school, women perish. That to me is a wiggle room negotiable point. But, again, hearing no for parochial, just for public, that, that's stabbing me in the heart. But if it's grandfathered in, so, resolved. And I appreciate your letting me comment. But I would check out that flashing, the, you know, if it is borderline, I worry, I worry a lot. And that is something that we, that the city can regulate. You know, there are lots of things we can't regulate, but we can regulate that time.
I appreciate that. Could that be a tremendous help for you for certain people?
To whom I'm related.
Thank you.
Sometimes tonight I like to talk a little bit about this handout, so I just wanna be sure that, I just, I don't wanna stop the caveants here. So I just, if it's okay, I'll do that at the end, but I just wanted to, just to get the issue back to what it is here. The issue right now you're talking about is the electronic signs. And again, I really appreciate what you said about people saying they want the city to stay historic. Just recently, what do you call it, Brain Fuel? The people that do in the new, the new signage, they did a survey, and in that survey, one of the 5 top concerns for Thomas citizens was that they liked Fort Thomas the way it is. Not that we never have new building, not that we never have development, but whenever that happens, it's sensitive to the historic nature of Fort Thomas. So going back to these electronic signs, and I love the way you talked to him about how that can interrupt what the character and charm is of our city, and then Dave, going to your concern about equity, I just wanted to point out a couple of things. And the first thing was that St. Thomas is the only church in town with an electronic sign that also has a school. So if I had someone bringing that equity concern to me, I would say, well, really, that decision was made on the school, not on the church. Secondly, I'm pretty sure that every church in town has a sign. I think the Presbyterian Church has a sign, the Episcopal Church has a sign, this, this one down the street here has a sign, and on those signs, they're saying what time their services are. Unless you want St. Thomas to have another sign, and one that's saying what time mass is, I think they're just taking, you know, advantage of having just one sign. So it's a school sign, but like the other churches are all putting out, you know, services at 9, services at 11, you know, services at 5. St. Thomas is just sticking that all on that one sign. So I think on your equity concerns, we do have a way for the other churches in town to advertise or put forward their, their stuff without getting a bunch more electronic signs. So I sort of think that's a different issue. Alicia, going to your issue about opening the door, and again, I think we would just say that.
St. Thomas of all the churches in town is the only one with a school. So that electronic sign was put in place because of the school, not because of the church. So I would really ask you guys tonight, just to put this issue to rest, let's not give any more electronic signs in this town unless they're exempt, or, you know, unless we have, you know, they came, St. Thomas came before y'all, you considered that, and then you made a decision. Rather than anticipating that we're going to have some kind of problem here in town, and then, you know, creating the conditions where we can have electric signs going all the way down the street. I would just ask you to kill that right now. I don't believe that we would have, in my opinion, if one of these other churches in town ever came to us and sued us because they can have an electric sign, it's just hard to believe that whatever happened. Again, and if it did, we can make the argument that we don't have a school, St. Thomas does, all the other schools in town have signs, they have a sign. So it's a school, 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 school versus you're a public school, you're a parochial school.
St. Catherine is a school too, right?
Yes, yes.
I think Catherine would be another one, but I don't think they have a currently electronic sign.
They don't.
They have a lot of them. They have a manual sign right now on the second building. They have a lot of them.
Well, and maybe you allow for schools, I mean, if that's the only other school that I know of.
I think their understanding of it was, and again, this goes back to the applicant from St. Thomas, I think they were understanding it was the parish of St. Thomas that applied, not the school.
Well, you know, it's so interesting you said that, because all these years I've done this, that sign thing, and the jail's wagging the dog here, the school's wagging the church, and it's not that at all. It says school because it in fact is a school. So, that answered the question for me tonight, but anyway, thank you very much.
Maybe you want to look back into that?
I think we should.
See how the application would accumulate.
So could that take it away, because they didn't apply?
No, no, it wouldn't change, the sign's there and it would be grandfathered regardless, it's just trying to do some research.
I thought off the top of my head, without looking at the language, that it was based on the school because the other schools had it, it was for the school the intent. Now, once again-
It was a school, not a church.
The church has a sign.
Yes, it does.
As a stove sign. But I remember them saying, it seemed like I recall, remember them saying in that meeting, that part of the intent of that was, every time it mass times.
And we could pull up minutes if we need to.
Yeah, I was thinking that, if I recall, that was part of the argument as well.
I was thinking, that's an easy question, because is St. Catherine, the school allowed to have electronic signs then?
They would have to come, right now the language is there, that they would have to come before our Board of Adjustment to ask for conditional use, but yes.
But if we opted, it would be no, is that correct?
Correct.
Because, but that would be last school.
Correct.
In Fort Thomas, that doesn't have one, unless you're counting preschools and-
Well, yeah, it's where do you draw the line at, is school?
Well, preschools aren't accredited, are they? I don't believe so.
You could have something like, well, we're talking about residential here, but I think you could have a school like at 40 North or something like that, or even down at the Fort Thomas Plaza, you could have something go in there. I think the real question is, given the numbers of churches, and the fact that most churches do have a sign today that may be changeable, maybe not, that has their mass times or other inspirational messages or what have you, you know, a lot of people, instead of having to manually go out and change those signs, they just want to be able to program them with an LED like everybody else. The question is, how many of those signs do you want in the city?
I brought that issue up last month. We do have someone here, I'm not sure if they would like to speak or not, on behalf of one of the churches that is over on Alexander Pike. I know some of the discussion last month was, you know, do you distinguish between the corridor and Alexander Pike or other areas? And I don't know, they have a few comments, but I think that they did come to speak on that.
Hello, my name's Laura Domenico, I'm at First Christian Church on Alexander Pike. We are located directly next to Woodhill School. And I have read through your proposal, regarding the electronic signs. We have a member who feels strongly about wanting to give us the sign. And looking through it, I feel like because you're also looking at making that area a mixed-use area, that the electronic sign would fit that bill. Also looked into some of the measurements, some of the restrictions that you have, and we're clearly advised by that. It's already an established sign, it would just be replacing the manual changeable sign. So we're not expanding it, it's not facing any residents. So, we just feel like this could be a really great addition for us in that area. I appreciate what you're saying, but it's not in a historical area. Do you have any questions about that, or locations? Laura, do you have anything you want to add?
Would we be allowed to regulate what locations? Will we do that? Okay. Because that's what's the question last, the last meeting.
We can, we can do it based on community care, based on order, based on, no, thanks.
Because I think the biggest concern was North Fort Thomas and South Fort Thomas, how many churches were on that alone throughout Fort Thomas? Because there's a majority of, I mean, there's so many.
And actually, that could be one of the conditions. When you write conditions, you have both objective and subjective ones. And one of the objective ones is it has to be on these streets or whatever else. That could actually be one of the conditions.
In the last time when we talked, that street, North Fort Thomas and South Fort Thomas, we were trying to make it look more uniform, and it seems to me that you wouldn't put signs in on that area. Well, those would be different, because remember, there's schools in particular-
Yeah, but they're within that same district.
You can't go back there, we have to go forward, you can't go back. Once something's done, it's very important.
Right, well, that's why, I mean, so you can flip that argument, saying, well, you already got all these electronic signs.
You can flip it, but that, once the laws change, that's it.
I understand, that's it.
So again, let's draft, let me draft some standards, and we will come back-
We're busy.
And then, okay. Okay, so now we're going to move on to freestanding signs in non-residential districts. So currently, right now, the central business district, my own size can be up to 10 feet tall, which is tall. Either the US Bank or, if I can pronounce the name correctly, the Shone sign? Shone sign is 10 feet. But those are put up there to show you, you know, we start, we lower the height to something more like five feet or so, five or six feet, that I think would be more appropriate in downtown.
I agree.
Are you proposing five feet, or what?
Yeah, I'm proposing something more like five feet, but I'm certainly open to-
I was just thinking more like six, if you're going to have like some plantings at the bays, which are going to be at least probably a couple of tall.
So again, keep in mind, notice when it says that we're ground, what I'm talking about. We're not talking about pole, we're not talking about pylon. You know, the sign downstairs that has the EMC on it for the city is a pylon sign. And there isn't, I mean, there, pylon signs are better than pole signs in terms of aesthetics, but we are solely going to, you know, a ground sign, which is what Shone has.
Are we defining height from the immediate grade? Because I think that Shone sign is already three or four feet above the sidewalk.
So, yes, we are talking. We do have very definitive calculations on how to measure height. And that's part of the five or six pages that is in the code about how we do that.
How do we do that?
So it's from the average grade. And if you intentionally build up the landscape mound, that in order to make the sign higher, that's measured from outside where you built it up. So moving on to continuing to talk about freestanding signs in the non-residential districts. You have a provision that would allow pole and pylon signs essentially everywhere. And as I've said, that we are not allowing that, as it's currently drafted. And the only places they would be allowed would be for menu boards, which would be like for your drive-through, and along US 27, like currently it's out there for Fort Thomas Plaza. And that is a provision in your current ordinance that allows a larger sign, a taller sign, for properties like Fort Thomas Plaza that are very large. You know, are you okay with completely getting rid of pole and pylon signs with the exception of those two situations? Menu boards and US 27, along US 27, for like Fort Thomas Plaza?
Is Highland Plaza one of those that wanted to bottom the line?
So it is, their sign is not currently permitted under the ordinance. And as it's currently drafted, probably would not be as well, because it is a pole sign.
Grandfathered?
It is grandfathered. It is grandfathered. And anything on that, and any time they change a sign in that structure, whether they change the panel, or they get one, rid of one sign and completely put in another one, that is, in turn, if the structure stays there, it is completely grandfathered.
So if you change it from Bob's hair styling to Mary's hair styling, that doesn't impact it at all?
Correct.
As long as it's a homeowner of that shopping center, and I would think that if they can't use a sign in my form, is that?
No, no, they can always use that sign structure. Unless something could, you know-
You mentioned the other two, that's why I was only curious, because they have exactly what, you know, what's very similar to that.
So as a, the ordinance that you currently have would make the sign at Highland Plaza non-conforming. So I'm not really sure how it got there, but it did. And that's a unique site, because all the retail spaces are turned perpendicular to the street, and all they have in terms of people understanding what's there is that large sign. So perhaps, given that, we might need to think about-
Maybe an exemption as far as per a development plan, per planning commission approval or something like that.
Yeah, I think we have to think about that, now thank you.
If there's unique circumstances, I mean, even for the plaza, you know, the one that's pictured there, you know, if that's part of the development plan proposal, that seems to make sense for that application, you know, maybe that's something that planning commission can grant.
And this is actually permitted, what's currently there is actually permitted. It is the Highland Plaza kind of thing that is not. So if y'all share Ms. Ferris's concerns, let's see if we can figure out a way to make, whether it's conditional use, or whether it is some other locational standard that we can come up with that allows that particular site to continue to have its needed signage. Are y'all okay with that?
Are you still thinking about permitting it in the US 27 or the condition would be it?
No, I think, US 27, particularly, you'll notice how that language is currently in the ordinance, as it's currently drafted now. It has to be a very large building lot, and it has to have a lot of frontage in order to be able to have a sign like it's currently there. Because I was specifically trying to limit something of that size to that site. So it would be permitted. Again, that's a really long-winded answer to your question. So, but I think we need to probably figure out something that we might can do for Highland Plaza that allows them to continue to have some visibility, given, it's like, whether it's pursuant to a site plan or conditional use or something else.
I wasn't here currently, which meeting was, I guess it was March, when you talked about the commercial districts and the neighborhood commercial versus general commercial, or Iowa commercial.
Right.
And I guess if I would have been here, I guess one of the things that I still think that the Highland Plaza parcel isn't really neighborhood commercial to me. I mean, I think, you know, it almost leaves its own, its own classification, its own district versus the other, the other commercial districts in the city. I'm thinking, like, even we have the Guardian Savings Bank up there, it's a pole sign, and the one right up here.
Oh, yeah, it is.
And then the one down there at the-
And that was simply taught, that measured today.
There's that one down there. I mean, I don't necessarily think that those are appropriate necessarily, but here, I don't think so necessarily.
No, that's permitted.
I understand, I understand that as a way to differentiate between the neighborhood commercial and general commercials, you know, you could permit the sign of one district, not the other commercial district, that's what I'm saying.
Right.
And I'm not sure I could treat that a blather, but, you know, I understand the reason for that.
We'll figure out something that we can do.
Dave, as a side note, in speaking to what you just asked, I think Alyssa was planning on adding some development plan requirements to distinguish the different size commercial districts outside of the CBDs. So, to distinguish the difference between, you know, the corner of Bidwack and the plaza, they would technically be the same zone, but there would be different classifications that they would, would kind of distinguish, you couldn't necessarily put a car lot there and things of that nature. Size restricted, so. I think she was going to cover that, despite the fact that they're the same zone.
Yeah, I just think you need to differentiate something.
And we will. Because of Bidwack and Fort Thomas, I mean, that's about an acre or so, which is a very different situation than Highland Plaza, or are they-
But this is really vehicularly oriented too.
Yes. No, but Highland Plaza is vehicularly oriented. Yeah. So we're moving on to for freestanding signs that continue in non-residential districts to these pedestrian signs. So right now, the ordinance is currently drafted, as it's currently in place. If you're not a first-floor tenant, you cannot have one of these pedestrian signs. We have some upper-floor tenants throughout downtown, for the most part, not really so much in Midway, that would like to have a pedestrian sign, because they're having trouble with people locating their spaces. So what I have proposed is to allow anyone to have a pedestrian sign as long as there is, you know, no, they have to be 10 feet apart essentially. Which may be somewhat constraining, but at least it gives to allow that to happen.
Well, they're not knowing how many. So you could walk from Miller to Highland Avenue, and there could be 20.
As long as they're 10 feet apart. As long as they're 10 feet apart, correct. Fundamentally, do you want to allow upper-floor tenants to have a pedestrian sign? Or do you want to keep the current language that you have that only restricts it to first-floor tenants?
I guess I have a question, are upper-floor tenants permitted to have a wall sign?
So we're going to get to that. Right now, no, for the most part.
But I would propose to allow it.
So that's actually a question I'm going to ask you.
I really see that as a question. That's what I was-
The sidewalk signs get in the way of walkers, it really does. Scooter, everything, even one gets in the way, it's really difficult.
Okay, so retain the existing language.
So what is, what is the, what is the language varying like the same before?
It says one for storefront. So for example, if you have two storefronts, you know, on, on Fort Thomas, then you have two signs. No matter how long that frontage is, for example.
Yeah, I mean, I could pay them, I mean, my biggest concern about them, not even at Fort Thomas, but other places, they're a tripping hazard, especially for people that have visual impairments or are handicapped. A lot of times the property doesn't put them there where there is adequate room to maneuver around them necessarily. I mean, you can, if you're able-bodied, it's fine, but if you're in a wheelchair, or a scooter, a bicycle, whatever, or a stroller, or just walking, sometimes they're, they're, they can be dangerous.
And does Fort Thomas have a location where they're supposed to be? Like, or are they allowed to be in the middle of the sidewalk, where people can go on right and left? Or they like to be near the building, or closer to the street?
The current language says, shall allow a six-foot clear width on the sidewalk. And so what I have added is shall allow a six-foot clear, unobstructed width on the sidewalk for safe pedestrian passage.
Kevin, have you had complaints?
I have had complaints about signs, it's more, you know, I have had, I think PD has had complaints about scooters, you know, you have scooters and then pedestrians, but then you have signs to it. And then you have three elements there that, you know, are challenging each other in some way.
Are there areas of downtown where the sidewalk is open to pedestrians?
Right.
Am I the only one questioning whether we should allow sidewalk signs at all?
Well, I'm kind of wondering, because I know that they are not six feet where they go, because I've moved them myself, to get around them. Because when you have a stroller, and you're pushing it, you can't get around them.
I mean, I guess I don't have a problem with the, the, the menu board right adjacent to an entrance into a business, but I don't want, you know, if it's right there as your way in the door, or whatever, or if they have an outdoor dining area, like some of the ones up at Midway or something, I mean, it's within the tane way area, and it's just for that bit, I don't necessarily have a problem with that, but I don't like them out, or it's in the public right of way, I guess, but-
You know, I'd be interested to see or hear what the businesses have to say. It feels like the businesses, I, I would say that they would think that it benefits them, you know, to kind of grant people-
I don't disagree that it doesn't.
I'm just, and I'd, I'd be interested to hear what David says. I don't know if that's here nor there, you know, with our decision, but it, it might be worth gauging them, that they're, they're concerned, but your, your concerns are absolutely valid, I-
Well, I have one more question, Ben. I get, I do agree with you, they would probably say it's helping them, but when they put them out near to the street, all the cars should park in front of them. Who is seeing them?
Yeah, pedestrians who are trying to go around them. So what we could do, and do in many places, is require them to be next to the entrance, whether that's like, like you see for the flower here.
That's very difficult, because that's where some of them have been, so they need a tree, and, or you have a garbage can, or a flower container, and then you have this much space to walk, because they couldn't by the entrance.
So the other thing we could do, because I think Kevin's right, I think there, there are some businesses who, especially for some of those who don't have a lot of frontage, they think it's important to them. We could, because right now, you don't have to have a permit, and I've continued to say that, you can see that in that card, and we could actually have them get a permit, and then they could actually come in and bring a plan in that says, you know, this is where I'm going to go put it, and here's the, the street tree, and here's the fire hydrant, and here's all of these other things, and if they can't maintain that six foot, then they don't get it, and if they don't put it where they're not supposed to, if they put it where they're not supposed to, then that gives Kevin the ability to say, you either put it where it's supposed to go, or you don't get to have one.
I, I guess the question is, if you do a permitting process, is that under the, the guise of zoning ordinance or separate ordinance?
No, it can be under the zoning ordinance, even though it's a little more in the right-of-way. Is that your question, Dave?
I guess, yeah.
The other way to do it, if, if that gives you discomfort, is if it's in the right-of-way, other places will put the standards here, but then it becomes a right-of-way encroachment permit.
Right. That's kind of what I was thinking, is it's almost a separate-
I mean, we can do it one way or the other.
Before comments, I think generally the right-of-way goes off the building, the facade doesn't go that far.
Probably. You know, I'd say in the Midway District, relatively close, and I'd say up here along the east side, yes. You know, one, one other, just thinking about this, one other comment, you know, I think our designer review board is, had some inquiries about, you were talking about flower pots, and I think the thought process with some of those are, that, with the sign as, as well, is, is, a lot of folks will step out, and then you have the scooters that are driving along there, and it's almost like, that is a protective barrier, I guess you would say, the sign and/or a flower pot for their patrons, that they don't step out and get clipped-
Well, I don't think that, that scooters are a whole other issue.
Well, they are, and I, I believe, it's, it's a struggle with our PD, because, you know, from a PD standpoint, it's like, do you want 10-year-old kids out in the street? And, 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 you know, we, we have intention of adding, in all likelihood, some sharos out here in this, this area, when the state is proposing to pay this, this year, so we would add some markings for that, but, you know, do we want young kids out there? You put them on the street, they're going too fast, so it, it's, it's not an easy answer.
One almost killed me today.
Right. And, and once again, that, that was, once again, the signage, the, the signage and the flower pots have contributed to their desire to have, have that there, but then it constrains the sidewalk, so it's, you know, not an easy answer.
I, I mean, I think getting back to your right-of-way encroachment permit situation, I mean, that's where I was kind of going with that, is, you know, if, if you have tables, menu boards, planters, dog bowls, whatever you have out there on the sidewalk, somebody needs to really look at that and say, does this make sense? And I don't, I don't want to belabor you all as staff, but it, this, to me, it's almost, it's not a, it's not a, oh, you can do this, and you can do this, and you can do this, it's more certainly leads to looking holistically, what is the street space, and how is it allocated?
I think those two areas that I just mentioned are probably your main areas of concern, where things are so tight and so close, and, you know, I think our, we do have some regulations, separate regulations, as it relates to outdoor dining, and then a lot of times our designer review board looks at that, and so we certainly do look at all those things, it's, it's, it's a, it's a challenge with your, withs.
I mean, does the cabinet have any percent, any purview on the sidewalk allocations in Austin?
You know, I've talked to them on a few different instances, they, they generally don't have a lot of-
They just don't want to get into it.
They, they don't want to get into the seating. We've had a couple instances where they, they have made comment, but, you know, they, they're trying to, they try to stay away from the, the seating at least. They don't like getting into the right-of-way, generally, because, you know, from a liability standpoint, they want to protect that, but-
So if we went down the route of a right-of-way encroachment permit, is that something you issue, or the cabinet issues?
That would be the cabinet if we went that, to that extent, on this court, or on, because it's their-
Because it's on the street.
Mm-hmm.
Right, okay. That means we may have to deal with sign permit, as opposed to encroachment permit. Right. All right. So generally speaking, what I've heard is retain the existing language, meaning one per storefront, we need to figure out somehow to permit them in a space that works, that keeps everyone safe. Am I mis, I misunderstood any of that?
No.
I probably should, it was going to be detail-oriented, it didn't last. All right, now we're moving on to wall signs, and that would be a wall sign or a hanging sign. Currently, you don't have a definition for a hanging sign, even though that's what the signs are, for example, at One Highland, so I've added that. The calculation stays the same, which is one square foot of area for each horizontal, linear foot of frontage, that's not changing in terms of the amount of signed area. To get back to, to the chairman's question, right now, that is pretty much, that wall area is limited to those people who have first-floor frontage. The language that is currently in front of you would say that the building owner gets to decide who has signage on that first-floor sign band, and that would be, and the sign band is the area between the first floor and second floor, between the windows, I should go to picture that in a minute. And so that would be something that the occup, the, the, the property owner decides, and you step out of that. So if they wanted to allow their upper-store tenant to have a wall sign, they would be permitted to do so. Are y'all okay with that?
There would be some, probably some oversight from the designer review board in some of those applications.
First of who has the sign, that's up to the building.
Right, but, but there would be some level of oversight in these districts.
Yes, I should point that out, I was going to point out at the end, but I'll point it out now. For the central business district, there are circumstances where now, where the zoning administrator can approve signage, but generally speaking, they will get a permit, and it will go in front of the, the designer review board. So right now, you're, the language that is in the code is the area for projecting signs is 12 square feet. I went and looked at almost all that you have today, none of them come close to that in terms of area. I am proposing to increase it to 15 square feet, specifically to allow, for example, someone to use it as a directory sign for those upper-floor tenants. So they would have, you know, stick out, it would project, and instead of saying Rio or Grass and Vine, it would say, you know, Dr. Smith's Dentists, and, you know, yoga, or whatever else. And to do that, to use it as a directory sign, I've, I've suggested increasing the area to 15 square feet. So they would be larger and potentially more intrusive, but it would then allow some additional signage, without having to allow additional signage on the building itself.
So I guess I have a follow-up question to that, like, I'm just thinking here, like at Fort Thomas Drive Center, you have the gross insurance up on the upper level, two bands, you know, a band sign on the second floor and the first floor, is that permitted?
So, not sure I understand your question.
So there's a sign-
So if you look at that-
See where it says the Fort Thomas Drive Center, and then up on, up along-
Yep.
There's also the sign?
Yep.
Is that permitted?
Yep, so that's actually the next question, is should we allow signs above the first-floor sign band? Because the sign band is defined as the area between those windows on the first floor and the windows on the second floor, that's the sign band. You don't currently have that definition, but I'm adding it in. And so one of the questions in front of you is going to be, two of them, actually, do you want to allow projecting signs above the first-floor sign band, like you see on the blue building, where that one is? And then do you want to allow wall signs, for example, where it says the insurance agency?
Right down, you don't.
So that's the two questions I'm going to have when we, as we progress through this.
So right now, we don't permit it?
Correct. So maybe to make this even more complicated-
But that's, that's kind of your reasoning for increasing the size of the projecting sign to accommodate that?
Correct, of those upper-store tenants. So are you okay with like 15 square feet of projecting sign?
How big do you, how big do you think that warden sign is in that blue building? How, how big is that?
Probably something-
How's that something, is probably 15?
That's probably the largest one we have, and that was before our current regulations allowing internally lit signs.
Right, right. And again, it'll stay there forever.
Right.
But keep in mind, even if we do increase the size of the projecting sign, they will still have to have at least a minimum clear height, so we're not going to be having, you know, hitting people on the head as they're walking down Fort Thomas Avenue. Are you okay increasing the size, size of projecting signs? So the chairman stole my phone, thunder. Do you want, it's not projecting signs, should they stay on the first-floor sign band, you know, again, the area between the display windows and second-floor windows, or do you want to allow them, for example, where the warden sign is? I, do you want my recommendation?
Sure.
Um, I would say no.
No, no.
I'm sorry?
No, what?
No, I, I think it's, I think on, especially on buildings that are as narrow as that building is, you start obstructing the integrity of the building, if you're allowing them to be between the windows on the top floor. Now, again, if we started this whole conversation, we're balancing the interests of the property owners and the tenants and the community, right? And so, and there are, you know, a fair number of people who are, who are renting these upper-floor spaces, who want some sort of signage. So, you know, just because I personally find it to be disruptive to your historic building, doesn't mean that we don't then still allow it, because we are then respecting the property owner and the tenants.
I mean, I prefer the, the gross insurance over projecting ones. And I wouldn't let any more projecting signs.
Okay. So, so not above the, the first-floor sign band?
The only, the only thing I would wonder about that, though, is sometimes right above the storefront, structurally, there may be issues with mounting a sign in that band immediately above the glass. If you have a transom window, or you have some kind of support being there, that just may not be feasible to put up a structural mounting sign, unless it's higher up. So I don't know, you know, if you run into that situation, what you do. I mean, if it's brand building, obviously, you can design around a better retrofit situation, like a warden's area, where he's got that facade at the bottom there, and it's a storefront. I don't know that he mounts that, but potentially, I don't know for sure, but-
If you have concerns, we have, have a higher structural engineer to design-
Or-
The support for it.
And even on wall signs, we require a structural engineer.
Oh, could may apply for an awning.
So again, we're going to, we're going to fast forward a little bit.
Jump ahead.
I'm sorry. So I saw these things with sort of this whole problem, I said, and it never works out. So right now, Kentucky is an odd state, and we've talked about this before, that you cannot, no, I didn't read that one, because you are only allowed to get variances for a very narrow amount of things, basically dimensional variances, that is, all Harris 100 allows you to do. So many communities will allow waivers, and, and we've already talked about what that means, and the process which you do. Currently, there are waivers in your code, but there's no process laid out, there's no findings that have to be made, or any of those things. So the very final question at the end of this is, given that you're not allowed to get a barrier, and there could be structural issues, or there could be all sorts of reasons why all of these, they, you know, a tenant or property can't meet all of these detailed standards, should the planning commission then have to be allowed to grant a waiver? Which would then solve the problem, the building problem. So again, so we can either talk about that now, or we can talk about-
I think it's, it is a case by case.
Yeah, and, and I'll hold it single language for what has, what you have to think about if you want to grant a waiver, that's in the administrative section that we did a few weeks ago.
Will PD extend the waivers, Lisa?
So if it's numerical, 10%, y'all can do, the, the no show can do. For all of the other standards, they would be able to waive anything.
As it relates to-
All signs.
All signs in general, others?
Yes, all signs, and we can narrow that more. I have not drafted any language, because I wasn't sure what would tolerate it.
Well, I, I guess, kind of, at least for the, the, where were the designer review board at purview, wherever that is, that doesn't affect the subject of discussion, but anyway, where were they at purview? Could they be the ones that grant the waiver?
So we could-
Or is it called a planning commission?
So we could structure it, so that if it's in the central business district, it would go to the DRB, and if it's outside the central business district, it would come to y'all.
I mean, I think that, I mean, to me, if you're looking at holistically, the whole facade, the massing of the building, windows, everything else, you know, to make more sense to the DRB, then it would be for us to kind of, you know, take this.
Elisa, could it be, we are proposing in some of our prior discussions, some language for the other commercial districts that regulates some things, and outside of that it would go to the DRB, could we add that to that in the other commercial district? The, so we have some certain standards that we, we've added in our other commercial districts, that are per-hour review for zoning administrator, if they want to go outside of those, I think those went to the DRB, could we add that to that in the other commercial districts as well?
I think that's what, um, the chair-
Kind of about the same.
Okay, I, I didn't know if you wanted those, there are outreach to be for the other commercial districts as well, and, and kind of take us out of the loop, to be quite honest, if, if they are already potentially going to those purviews, that we can leave it in their hands?
Well, we could, that actually makes me, they'll, they'll be looking at some of the design standards, so they could actually grant the waivers for all of them, if you want, we could do that as well.
I mean, you know, to some degree, we're not the arbiter of architectural taste.
Okay, that's a great idea, we'll have the DRB do it all.
It doesn't get me to bump stuff on the- Just maybe we'll cover some for something like that, come to the planning commission together.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
So what that will mean is that we'll have to grant, and I'll have to draft another section for them to do that, in the administration section, but I think it makes sense, you know. So have we, are, is your mind numb now? Okay, so, not to pick on the people at Warden too much. So right now, awning signage is limited to those people who have frontage on the first floor and awnings there. What, what have, what do you think about allowing awning signage, not on the slanted portion, but just on the valance, over second-floor windows? And I, you don't have it currently, obviously. This was a, a good example for you, potentially to envision-
Right.
-what it would look like to have signage on those valances.
I think they'll give her the big sign for that. I've had a lot of, to me, if you're not going to permit an upper floor wall sign, permitting an upper floor awning sign is going to indicate no purpose.
Well, not really, I mean, this is my opinion, obviously. So a wall sign is going to take up a lot more area on the building, whereas that's going to be fairly minimal, you know, it's going to be about eight or 10 inches, you may not even be able to necessarily see it.
Oh, you're talking about, yeah, that's right, you just said the balance, not the inside.
Just the dimensions.
I get it, I don't know, you'd be able to see it from a vertical.
Yeah, I don't know if you can see it or not.
Well, they'll see it far away.
But it would be something that if you're across the street trying to find the wall room, and again, I should have prefaced this whole discussion, especially as we're talking about downtown, we're looking at signage at two different levels, one is the pedestrian level and one is the vehicular level. And in places like downtown and Midway, you're balancing both. And I should have prefaced this conversation, I apologize that I did not. So again, this is going to be geared more towards the pedestrian, trying to find where they're going.
It would be easier for them to find the location, that's no.
If you had, I mean, if you had this common, seven of people that are looking for upper floor and they can't, they're going to wait.
Yeah, yes.
I had the choice, I had to prepare the balance of it.
I don't think we could tell them to take it down, I frankly, I just.
I guess, well, let's see the side, along that same thought process, can you, would you, can you restrict it so that it can't have both projecting sign and awning sign?
Yes.
Yes.
I think you might want to.
But again, but again, y'all have just decided that you don't want projecting signs above the first floor sign band.
So it would make a difference.
So it really doesn't make a difference.
Oh, yeah, okay, I get it.
I'm going to have to apologize to these folks. All right, now we're going to get to the chair's question. So should signs be permitted above the first floor sign band? So you don't really have a lot of that out there. The only one I could find was the gross insurance agency. So there are two schools of thought, when you're talking about design and signage and all that. A, you never do it, or B, you do it for the name of a building. So, you know, it would be like, forgive me for using this example, but like One Highland would be a name of a building, and that would be something that would be above the second floor, above the first floor sign band. Here, obviously, at some point, gross insurance agency was put in there. Are they still there?
Yes.
That's the only building in Port Thomas Avenue.
Yeah, that's the only one I can find. And part of that is because if you look at a lot of the buildings, especially in downtown and to certainly extend to Midway, they don't really have enough space above the second floor windows to put signage. The building just doesn't allow it, it wasn't constructed that way. But, you know, potentially there may be other buildings that may be retrofitted or built with sign, I mean, what is your feeling about signage above the first floor sign band?
There is a sign on the roof by the ice cream store.
On the roof. In Midway?
No. Yeah, there's an ice cream store, yeah, between Old Five and Nine, you look to the right, I think it was Delta.
It is.
Yes, and there's a sign up on the roof.
Oh, my gosh.
Yes, uh-huh. Yeah, I think it was Delta, something, and they just looked out.
Right.
So we probably need to address that as well.
So root signs are prohibited?
Okay, great.
Yeah, because those are prohibited, which is a whole other issue, but.
Okay.
So should we, you know, continue to prohibit signage above the first floor sign band? So again, we are balancing the issues of these buildings, tenants, property owners. We are, what we have decided so far is, in terms of dealing with upper floor tenants who would like to have some identity signage on the, on the valance for second floor awnings, we are allowing large projecting signs for directories, and the window signs, they can have a window sign up there as well.
I'm okay with not allowing it.
Same here, just limited to the name of the building.
Okay, name of the building.
Please.
All right, if it's okay with the chair, can we stop and take public comment?
Does anybody have questions or comments? Are you awake?
I mean, I mean, we've been joking a lot about the fact that it's very detailed and it's minority, but the reality is, and let's just look at this picture here, signage, while it is somewhat transitory, does very much impact the character of both your district and your buildings. And that's why we're spending so much time on it. And so I don't want you to think that I'm being flip or any of those things, I mean, it is a very serious thing. I mean, it's the one thing that we deal with as planners that does tend to go away quicker than other things, but we just pointed out that the warden sign has been there for a long time, the sign that, the language to show that it's been there for a long time. And once it's there, it has non-conforming lines. So we do have to think very strategically and tactically about where we're allowing signage.
It's probably more to do with temporary signs or window signs, that you can put signs from the inside facing out, and you can't control content, and I'm curious about political signs. Is there any control or advice or restrictions or limitations or?
No, no.
Pardon?
No, no.
Okay.
And it's always distinguished between, as we're having these conversations, between commercial and, you know, non-residential and residential parcels, but in both situations, we can't control content and we cannot control the message.
Okay, so even if the message is, I hate to say, more topic than a candidate, there could be hate speech or love speech or I'm pro this or you're anti that or whatever.
I mean, the only thing that we would ever be able to control would be obscenity.
Obscenity.
Okay, thank you. Whether it's text or pictures. So certainly, there's always, I keep in mind that we're dealing with free speech and.
I just want to bring that issue to your all's attention, Frank, would you mind going back to that picture of the Historic Highland Theater there, just, you just said it just before. So, and Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, because I don't go to the meetings, but I've watched them, I think there was discussion of the design review board about signage on that particular building. And what I think the design review board discussed was limiting that, that was the Highland Theater, if you all do live here. You know, it used to have a feature here, the films, the posters on either side, I think that's what the design review board recommended, they would put like a wall sign on either, the middle there where it's black and says Historic something, Historic Highland Building or something.
So right here, yeah, they talked about, like a marquee, a small marquee, and was putting it back on either side of the main entrance to, you know, once again, that would be on the first floor, but meeting square footage is, you know, that we would have in place, but to have more of a marquee there that would.
For tenants.
For tenants.
Oh, and said that's signed because it's inside right now.
Currently, it's inside, but, you know, the thought process was to put something like, you know, down on that first floor.
But is it a marquee or is it a directory sign?
I mean, it's technically a directory sign.
That's the actual old case from the theater, they kept that.
Very clear poster.
And put the inside, the tenants, like you know, my seat at Doctor's Office or whatever is inside that, so.
Oh, cool.
Maybe bring it back to the theater look, minus the big marquee sign out front that used to be there, the pictures I've seen, so, that particular sign on the inside is 25 square feet, goes half the magic of the day, try to get an idea of how we can try to make it work to both get exposure for the tenants upstairs and in the back, also bring back the work of the theater, get that working out, so.
And not putting anything up above, which I think they weren't necessarily receptive to that either, they kind of on the same page, what can we do, and this was a suggestion made, and they liked, you know, and I think honestly, it feels like we're in the same boat, that's kind of the feel, feeling here.
My fear is looking at that picture, and actually, Alyssa, Alyssa, you brought it up before when you said you'd change the characteristic of a building, a sign can change the historic characteristic. I mean, I'm seeing awnings up there with signs, you know, I think that's what you all were just discussing, allowing was putting an awning sign up. So I would hate to see that building now have, you know, Met Yoga and Burke Baptist Annie and, you know, who else is up there on that second floor as an awning versus, because that will be allowed, and it wasn't before, you know, versus that cool marquee sign on the other side. So I just want to bring that to your attention, that's an issue right now, to my understanding with that particular building. I don't think there's that many buildings in Port Thomas that have second floor businesses that need advertising, but I just, that's all.
I have a question, so if we were to allow them to put an awning with a marquee, would, you wouldn't just want one on the left, would you want, like you want awnings?
I'm just saying, do we want awnings, do we want a city where we're having, you know, brunch awnings up on the second floor?
I know, that's what I'm wondering, and then do you have one? Is it, let's just say the Met Yoga wants one and nobody else wants one, it means.
So again, that would, that would be an alteration to the building, it would have to go in front of the design review board, and so it would all be a very comprehensive design to the building.
Okay.
So you would not end up with, you know.
Yeah.
Pink, Met Yoga.
Yes.
Blue.
Right.
I don't know what else, but, you know, and I'm just saying, why have, I mean, why, like you're talking about opening the door, why open the door to have second floor awnings at all?
But we don't, we don't regulate the awnings themselves.
I'm sorry?
We don't regulate the awnings.
But I think what you're doing is, right now, we don't allow awnings in the second floor.
Oh, no, they're having, they just can't have signage on.
Oh, okay.
And it gets to the design review board, is that grabbing? So, yeah.
Thank you. So currently, you do not have any standards for murals in your ordinance. There is one, obviously, in downtown, and you haven't rightly pointed out that that's something that we need to start making about in terms of regulating. You have to be careful with them, and if you'll notice in the draft, they are, they are not regulated as signage, and they will be added within the use tables as a permitted use with the standards that are currently in draft. As it's currently drafted, they would only be permitted in the central business district, so they would not be permitted in the US 27 excuse district, they would not be permitted in the neighborhood commercial office district.
I agree.
And that's my question to you, they are very much, they tend to be something that are in downtowns, but I personally, I think there are probably some spaces outside of downtown where that would be nice.
I've been approached by, and it's been some time ago, and the person didn't want to pursue creating language, but the backside of the animal hospital, if you come in from the south side, you see the wall of the backside of the animal hospital there, and it's, would seem conducive to, to a mural there. Also, there was a proposal at one point when we, when it was more internal, that a nice one might be on the side of that furniture as you're coming in from the south. Just some, you know, some locations that, to spark, spark a vision for you all, that might be a couple of locations that might be conducive to, to a mural. I wouldn't envision them being plastered everywhere, and obviously, there would be some other level of regulation, design review, or, I obviously didn't get to in-depth look at what Alyssa had in there, I'm sure she pulled it from some other regulations as well, but, those are just a couple of areas that I've been approached about over the years.
So in terms of the way it's currently drafted, they're only permitted in the central business district, you know, typical health and safety standards, you can't discover, you can't destroy or materially alter distinctive architectural feature of buildings, it can't be eliminated, has to be maintained, you know, those kinds of things. But what's not in that language is, the second question, should it, should the size be limited? Those kinds of things, but let's just start with, and again, we're thinking about this as a character issue, should it just be limited to the CBD, or should we think about doing it in other places in town?
I don't, I personally have a problem with a lot of that.
Non-residential district? No, no, just, again, the commercial districts.
But you could put one on, like, if somebody wanted to paint a mural down there at the plaza, they could do that. Or at an plaza, if somebody wanted to put a mural down there, they could do that, or wherever, basically any non-residential district, you could put a mural. Somebody probably.
What do we have now, is now do we allow?
Yes.
Now, we don't have any regulation.
We don't have any.
We have nothing. There are either use regulation or any regulations to regulate them, so I don't know how the one got there that's currently on the side of the building in downtown, but it is, if somebody wanted it, not what it used to be.
I, that's a big door to open, and you're, if you can't regulate contact, that's a big wide door that you would be opening.
So again, it has to meet the definition of a mural.
What is the definition?
And it is not, and we're not classifying a mural as a sign, essentially, we're classifying it as art.
I understand that, but one way is art, I mean, art, the word art is a little interpretable.
It is, do you want me to read the, you the definition of a mural?
Yes, please.
As it's currently defined? Again, as I started this whole conversation out with, one of the largest pieces of this puzzle that is extremely important are the definitions. So if you haven't had an opportunity to look at that, I would say, you said, the definition. Any pictorial or graphic illustration that is painted, constructed, or fixed onto an outside vertical wall, facade, or other surface of a building or structure, other than a signed structure that does not constitute a sign as defined by this ordinance, which is meant to be decorative in nature and where architectural elements in a given wall are incorporated harmoniously therein, a mural may contain incidental text, logos, or symbols, but it is generally for the purpose of decoration or artistic expression.
Well, John, you just said that at the end of that, that's pretty clear, but like, incidental text, I guess the word incidental seems awfully interpretable to me, if it's, let's just say, if it's a mural of downtown Port Thomas, you may see the Highland Theater building or Port Thomas Drive Center or something, which I would consider incidental, but I'm not sure where that line would be crossed when it's no longer incidental, but it's a very blatant message.
You can make the argument about a lot of parts of the building, I mean, there are, there's, there's no way for us to always be able to objectively measure everything. And so it comes down to the zoning administrator's opinion, and then his decision can then be appealed to the Board of Adjustment. If, you know, for example, a mural comes forward and the zoning administrator says it's not incidental, they could appeal that, that ruling.
Yeah.
To the Board of Adjustment.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Would you have to, so in this case, are we saying that you had to permit to put a, a piece of a mural?
So that's actually another question that I just failed to put up there.
I don't know, I mean, right now, we don't regulate it at all, if someone was going to paint their wall ten different colors, we're not saying what they could do outside of the designer review board.
Right, so as it's currently drafted, it was only going to be in the central business district, which meant by definition, it was all going to have to go in front of the design review board, and they would have to then give the approval for it through a certificate of appropriateness. So if we're going to step outside of the central business district, then we need to think about who is going to be reviewing them.
Well, I guess the question is if it's not, if it's, we're saying, should they be permitted, but right now, they are permitted, we're not, you know, if you don't.
My interpretation in the past has been that they're a sign, and whether that's right or wrong or the other.
Now and there, I don't think you could win a court case in that.
Well, and once again, maybe that goes to the Board of Adjustment, but my interpretation in the past is, it's a sign, and therefore, I have not permitted them, and nobody's really pushed, you know, we had a couple of people that were interested, I said, hey, let's find some regulation, and maybe we can present this to the planning commission, and it never came to fruition, but I, I have, that's how I classified them when I've been approached. And obviously, Alyssa's saying, kind of, creating that a little bit differently is art versus a sign.
Right, I think most people would argue that that's an artistic expression, which you can't really prohibit necessarily.
Well, that's why we wanted to get ahead with the language, get some language in there where we. Well, that's why we wanted to get ahead with the language. Get some language in there where we can put some solid.
Well, you can define it and you can define it as a use. Now, if we decide to do it, it will be in the use tables for the districts in which it is permissible. So that's how you allow it and how you regulate it, is by declaring it a use.
So a mural would be?
It would be an accessory use.
A mural, did you say? Is that the word you used this morning? Did you say a mural would be, except for, I didn't hear the first word. Thank you.
I guess all I'm saying is, you know, I don't ever, I don't think you can limit it. I wouldn't limit it to the central business district.
And that's fine. We can do that when we can put it outside the central business district, but then the next question becomes, who reviews them?
Okay.
Well, no.
All right. No, what's your?
That's why I say, I don't know how you can regulate them. If they're not advertising, if they're not a sign, I don't think, I don't see how you can.
The size.
You can say they're a use and they have to get a zoning certificate or zoning permit as we've declared, defined it.
I just, I just struggle with the use. Well, what if something wants to do, I mean, I've seen like, but like in smaller rural areas, people do, you know, they do the little quote barn signs. I mean, I've seen murals of those on sides of buildings. You couldn't argue that that's a use. That's a mural. How do you reconcile that? If you just put a geometric pattern on your wall.
I think you can argue that a mural as we've defined it is a use, is an accessory use.
I have trouble with that.
But you use it.
Yeah, what, what use is it?
Visual pleasing, it's a second ability. That's your use.
Well, you can paint your wall green and say, that's a use.
Well, just like he was saying, maybe the veterinarian, maybe they, you would say it needs to go appropriate with the building or the business, such as some kind of vet thing on the side.
But you can't regulate content.
But then it becomes a sign. It becomes a sign. Once it is.
Well, in the mural, you can regulate what goes on, right?
No, you can regulate, if you have it, as long as it meets the definition, and we say it's outside the sign, we're just not a sign, meets the definition of a mural, then yes, you can have many places use the design review board, they use their article, art commission to approve that.
But you can't regulate the content.
But you cannot regulate the content. But you have standards beyond what, you know, what's in this ordinance. You have standards in this ordinance and if it meets those, then whomever the approval body is approves them. Now, as you can tell from this discussion, we have opened, if we do this, we are opening up a can of worms that has not been opened. And there are, there are different kinds to it, right? There are, for example, the one that's downtown, that adds a lot as you're coming in. The places that Kevin's talking about, they would act as a terminated vista. As well, and that becomes artistic expression. It becomes also a way of creating character. It also says, this is where, you know, you know you have arrived when you get to this mural. So they are, they are serving all different kinds of purposes beyond signage. So, you know, fundamentally, I, I sort of, maybe I should have asked this question to begin with. Do you want them?
You're changing the whole history of our city.
Jim, if you could hold, hold your comments for a little bit, please. Thank you.
I can't hear. I'm sorry.
We just said we didn't have any objection. We didn't have any objection. As far as having murals.
Lisa, I've got a question and I'm just not very well versed in murals and, and things of that nature. I apologize. The, I mean, I, generally, I find them to be, they scare the heck out of me as an attorney because, you know, I hear you can't regulate content. Generally, that's absolutely correct. What about, you know, corporate contact or content? Not obscenity, but something that might rise to a level of hate speech, you know, a racist portrayal.
So as I've said, it's not a sign. Because you have definitionally not called it a sign, that it has not been subject to the issue of content neutrality.
Okay.
Exactly. Not calling it a sign doesn't mean it is a sign.
I mean, we are, we are, and truthfully, once, if we decide to do this, and this came up in the discussion of signage, if we decide to walk this road, I am going to pull it out here and actually put it in the use standards that we will get to in a few months. So it will become a use permitted or conditional in our district with these standards. Again, because we do not want to define it as a sign in any way, shape, or form, even though it's not defined as one, by having it in the sign ordinance, it structurally appears to be one. You said that to your question, I'm sorry.
I think so.
I'm sorry. I didn't. I, I tell you what, why don't we table this discussion until we get to those use districts, district use standards in a couple of months?
Yeah, let's do that.
And then we'll raise it again. How's that?
Give us time to absorb it a little bit.
Right.
And it seems like it would fit better there than here, because I think we're getting it confused with signage.
Yeah, and, and, yeah. It came up in this conversation and it seemed like y'all wanted to add a conversation about it. Let's move on and then we'll do it when we do design.
Yeah, I think that just the overall takeaway, it's a bickering issue in the central business.
It is. Yeah, it is. And so we need to have a much more fuller conversation about it than we're having, than we can have right now.
Correct.
Temporary signs. So as I, we started this conversation, there are a touchy issue for many different reasons. What we are proposing is that you're allowed to have, within your residential district, if you're a single-family home, a duplex, or attached single-family, you're allowed to have a maximum of sixteen square feet per lot or parcel. The number is unlimited. You just can't have more than sixteen square feet. And if it's freestanding, four feet in height, and no permit would be required. And then in terms of non-residential districts, the maximum of twenty square feet, again, unlimited number, maximum height of six feet. We need discussion about that.
There's no time limit off.
Correct.
I mean, so we're saying you could put a banner up and leave it up?
Forever.
That's just the same.
So pre-REED versus the Town of Gilbert, that kind of language was in many, many ordinances. Because of REED versus Gilbert, most communities have done away with the time period. Because it has seemed to be free speech and you are allowed to have free speech in your front yard three hundred and sixty-five days a year.
It's not temporary, but I mean, permanent, or it could be permanent.
But, yeah, it could definitely be permanent, but it is a rotating, you know, one month it's Sally Sue has graduated from high school and next month it's, you know, whatever else, or someone's getting there, or whatever else.
Vote for somebody who's developing.
Political signs, it's thirty days before and seven after, right?
Yes, but we are no longer allowed to have political signs at all, because that is content.
You can't differentiate.
You can't differentiate. You can't differentiate between election signs, real estate signs, any of those things, because that is definitely content. It's not content neutral. So in order to thread that needle of, of what happened after REED, this is the generally accepted practice in most communities. Now, I'm not going to lie to you. I'm going to tell you that some communities have said, we'll just get sued. And that's your choice. I'm going to tell you that's not what I would recommend.
I'm fine with it anymore. I'd rather not see. I don't think the same was too.
No, it's wrong. I don't think we should put it in the article.
This is correct. I agree.
Calling it temporary, but we're saying that you can just stay up forever. That just seems kind of strange.
Well, the temporary in that they're, they're not attached to a permanent structure, right? It's those yard signs.
Yeah, right. Or banner.
Or banner.
Yeah, right. Correct. I think it would be the better opportunity to allow it than not to because of lawsuits.
My, my thought personally, how I got past that, you know, obviously, we can't call it a political sign because it's just a sign. But, you know, what if somebody's trying to sell their house and it just doesn't sell? They have a sign out there, maybe it sits out there for six months or a year.
Correct.
You know, all of a sudden, you're putting a timeframe on somebody trying to sell their house. So that's kind of what justified it for me in my own mind, that, you know, that, that's necessary, I think, for someone to try to sell their house. And then once again, we're, we're taking that out, that it's not a real estate sign, it's not a political sign, and that's why they should be able to have it there for an extended period of time, in my mind. That's how I justified it.
But, I mean, let's just be honest about it. The idea that there could be, do y'all know the term bermish shaped signs?
Yeah.
That there could be bermish shaped signs all the way down, you know, Hollywood Drive or something. It's troubling, right?
I guess the only question I have, but then I know you can't reach, you know, I know from, you have some content, but how about all side advertising? So like, say, I got new windows from Hella or Haters or whoever, and I put that advertising sign on my front yard, can we restrict that in a residential district for, for a time period?
You know, there's a currently.
Because that's, you know, it's advertising.
Yeah. The distinction between commercial and non-commercial speech is currently an issue that is unclear as to whether or not regulating commercial versus non-commercial speech is content neutral. And I'm sure in the next decade that will be decided. Until then.
Till then, we'll leave it alone.
We're leaving it alone.
That's my thought. Because I have seen some of those where it seems like, I can't think of a particular case or company, but I've seen cases where, you know, somebody were prospective or whatever, and they just leave the sign in their yard.
Now, you know, we do have standards in this ordinance that talk about you have to have, your temporary signs cannot become deteriorated. And if they do so, that is a violation. So, you know, if it rotates between Johnny getting married and Sue graduating from high school and I got new windows, you know, over a period of time, that's not an issue. But if Johnny graduated from high school two years ago and the sign, you know, is deteriorated, then that could be a way to get it out. But let's be honest about that. That is just an administrative burden. Like, someone has to call and complain that Johnny graduated from high school two years ago and then, you know, Kevin or Sam or Mark has to go out there and deal with that.
And we do say that the temporary, and maybe it does say in the language, but they cannot be on like the broad way.
Correct.
I've seen lots of instances where people stick it out in the right way.
We ain't all the time.
Rather than permanently or temporarily.
May I open it up for public comment?
Yeah, so. Is anybody still awake?
Speaking about REED versus the Town of Gilbert, it looks like that was a free speech issue, right? That the Town of Gilbert was saying that a particular, that your different restrictions on different kinds of signs based on content.
Correct.
I'm wondering if we should get a legal opinion on that, because it sounds like the board is concerned about the length of time that a, a sign could stay up. It looks to me like if you let a political sign stay up for five days and, you know, the sign advertising my yard sale for two years, then maybe that could be regulated. Could we get a legal opinion on?
We'll do, yeah.
Thank you.
Any more comment?
So I'll leave it as we've already talked about the administrative provisions. And you, you said you wanted the, the waivers to go to the design review board.
Where are they?
Right. So in terms of, we are at eight thirty-six. We want to start down temporary accessory or do we want to defer?
What's that? On table? I think that's table. Come back to that.
Okay. So in terms of next steps, on June fifth, this board and the city council will meet together to talk about large policy issues for the central business district. And so that'll be a combined meeting for both of y'all.
So will that be an official planning commission meeting?
I don't think so. I spoke with Matt and he said he's probably going to add it to the agenda for the council.
So it won't be a planning commission?
So it won't be a formal planning commission meeting, but, you know, it will be politicized because it's a council meeting. And then Alyssa, because of the content of that, was proposing to not have a planning commission meeting next month unless we have normal business to come for us, such as a plaque, but not have another presentation immediately after the one that's going to be changed. And I sent out that invite to you all. I love everybody responding to this chat.
So I didn't want the invite, but it's not, we don't have to be there.
I mean, you'll have to, but I mean, the idea is that, that we're trying to go along the same path. And I think, you know, the council might be interested in some of our, our discussion, how we got to a certain point. And I think having you there, obviously Alyssa can speak to most of it, but having you there to potentially speak to your side of an, of an individual issue, I think would be beneficial.
Of a specific issue they want to discuss.
I think it's just a collective update, per se, on where we're at, what we've discussed.
On our discussion, we haven't done anything. It's just they want to know what we're discussing, which they can't see from our minutes.
So where this came from is, you know, we started this eighteen months or whatever, we were talking about doing a form-based code for the central business districts. And so that has been, that has gone by the wayside and lots of the large policy issues have yet to be discussed. We had, we had a few discussions in January, if y'all remember. And so the, the idea was, since this is a huge issue for the community, to have to bring both of you together and have those discussions. You know, everything from, you know, maximum height buildings to first floor residential, to all sorts of large policy choices. Bring, bring both of you together. So if, and I won't say this, if there's a forum for the planning commissions, it will actually have to be a meeting.
And this isn't a public hearing?
It would be a special, we could probably do a special meeting, advertise it a couple of days in advance.
Yeah.
But what I'm saying, it's not a public hearing, because there are specific.
More of a special meeting that would technically only need a relatively short time. We'll, we'll get it out as soon as I get a response from you all as to your ability to attend. Then yes, if we hit that quorum, we'll certainly advertise it. Thank you, Alyssa.
Can I speak just to this handout since I didn't want to interrupt the cadence of the summer, just for a sec? I promise I think you guys are tired, honestly. But last month, toward the end of the meeting, when there was no time for public comment, Dave, you brought up the issue of local historic districts and, and national register historic districts. And eighteen months ago, when I came for the very first time here, I didn't know anything about, believe me, any of this stuff. And since then, we've had the privilege of interacting with the Cincinnati Preservation Association. And Beth Johnson is a historic preservation expert and she came and talked to city council. She is willing to come and talk to y'all. So if that's something that you would like, she'd come and talk to all kinds of issues about what design review board is, what the design review guidelines are, and, and what it means that we have those in Port Thomas. I know Matt has talked about providing training and Monday night he talked about it again. Beth's organization provides training on lots of different issues. One of them is how to avoid a lawsuit. So I mean, you know, you brought that up, that you're concerned about that and I, Tim's concerned about that and y'all are. But the difference, what I have here is just, this is from the state of Georgia, but it just so perfectly talked about it. And then this handout is from Beth Johnson. And what she talked about was a national, so there's two different things. There's a national register and that identifies a local district protects. They're two different things. They can intersect, but they're not the same. And they're not, just because something is not on a national historic register doesn't mean that you would pop that out of a local historic district, because they're two different things. So for example, in two thousand and two, so in two thousand, the city had a discussion about, you know, what the city would look like in a millennium, in the new millennium, how it would go forward. And, you know, a lot of people, as we've talked about, like Port Thomas, the way it is, that's why they pay the big bucks to come here right now, is they like the city the way it is, like the small town atmosphere. So in two thousand and two, the two CBDs, the Midway and Uptown, were made protected historic districts. And what that means is a local historic district that's under the purview of the design of good guidelines, what we talked about tonight. So for example, one of the. ascent in Covington right now, because there'd be no protections at all. So that in 2002, the Midway and Uptown became these local protected districts, and that is the function of the districts, to protect. Separate is the issue of getting on the national register, and that didn't happen until 2008. And that's the Midway. I talked to two historic experts about this, and one is Debbie Robinson, who was a historic expert in Bellevue. And she worked for the city of Fort Thomas in 2008. So she, and were you here for it in 2008?
As a part of, yeah.
Yeah. So what she said was, in 2008, they actually were going to do all three districts, put them on the national register. They were going to do the Midway, they were going to do the CBD, well, or Uptown, what we call this, and Inverness. She said they started the process in the Midway, and it's an owner's process, they get an entire district on the national register. They had to hire a consultant, it took a long time. If you look, you can look up the Midway on the national register, and if you look at it, you can see, it's like a 32-page document, the back and forth, it went back and forth between the federal government and here. And she just said that, when they did that, just the other cost benefit was a lot to continue going to the other two districts. So the fact that this is not on the national historic district does not mean it's not historic, and it doesn't mean it shouldn't be protected. It means that it is honored by our national government. So to be on the national historic register does two things. It honors or identifies that area as an area of interest for history, and it also opens up that area to some federal grants. So right now, the Midway can get grants, CBD cannot from the feds. But that has nothing to do with protecting the integrity, or the beauty, or the character, the charm and character of our town. That's a local historic district. So again, I mean, it seemed to me last month that there was some confusions about that, and I hope that this...
Well, what I brought up last month was, in Midway specifically, is the zoning, the limits of the historic district that we had delineated for Midway were different from what was actually in the national historic district for Midway. And it would only make sense, really, to either, one, expand the national historic district to match our district, or to reduce our district to match the national historic district.
Well, you know, I guess that does make rational sense, but it really doesn't make legal sense. At least, my opinion, to hear them.
Well...
All your hair, but so these are two different things, why they decided, so my unders, I don't even know, to be honest with you, they, where the CBD ends down in the Midway, but I think it does include up to Brantwood. Why they didn't include that in 2008, I mean, I think we can all just guess.
Well, they hired a professional architectural historian to look at that, and essentially, for any historic district, you have what's considered a contributing property or a non-contributing property.
Absolutely, yeah.
So the only, the only structures that are eligible or protected, quote unquote, are contributing structures. Non-contributing structures are not.
Are you talking about in the federal register or in the local protected district?
No, I'm talking about under, as a national historic district.
So they're not protected at all?
Correct.
As the national register, and Alisa, I know you know more about this than I do, but in the national register, nothing is protected. There is no protection off from being on that.
Well, they're not, they're not protected so much as you can make an argument that a certificate of appropriateness for historic context is only applicable to a contributing structure. A non-contributing structure typically is not subject to a certificate of appropriateness for historic context.
So Dave, where are you getting that information, just out of curiosity?
It's under the, it's under the US, the Department of Interior Guidelines, and through the Kentucky Heritage Council.
So I would really encourage you and others to invite Beth Johnson to come here, just for that particular reason, because she can answer those questions like this. And then for this board and the other boards, to get that training, so that we can have a definitive answer from experts on these situations.
Right. So, I mean, professionally, I do a lot of section one, it's called section 106, quality consulting. And I work, one of my coworkers is actually a professional architectural historian that used to work for the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet. She now actually runs the Historic Preservation Program in Frankfurt with the Kentucky Heritage Council, she's on the board of Kentucky Heritage Council. And so I discussed the Midway with her specifically about the consistency there. And the issues that you have is, if you, if you try to oppose a certificate of appropriateness for a, you have to have an objective standard of what's historic and what isn't. And if, and if a professional historian, under the guise of the Kentucky Heritage Council, determines that it's a non-contributing structure, say, say like Fifth Third Bank over here.
Yeah.
That would be a non-contributing structure. So you couldn't really say from a, and this is, this is an architectural character, it is a historic context. Your historic context is, there was a significant historical event that's associated with a historical significant figure, a person, or there is a compelling architectural style that was part of a larger architectural, or part of a larger development process. So Fort Thomas, like, at the Midway, it was more geared towards the development of the fourth. That's what it's based on. Not, it's not based on a person, it's not based on a historical event, it's based on the ancillary support of the military renovation. Here in the, here in the town center, you could say, well, this is based on the historic development of Fort Thomas, it's a streetcar suburb in the early 20th century. But any, any structure that's not really part of that, like Fifth Third Bank wasn't part of that development, it's a streetcar suburb, it would be non-contributing. So if Fifth Third Bank wanted to do something different, tear down the building, they could, because it wouldn't really, in terms of historic appropriateness, it wouldn't be historical. Now, you could, you could still have your design review board saying, we don't want a glass building, we don't want anything else. But that's, that's separate from historic, in terms of the eyes of the state and the eyes of the feds.
It's interesting, because my understanding's a bit different. And my understanding is that we have an ordinance in place that creates the design review guidelines. It creates the design review board, which then is up to create the design review guidelines. So I think an argument can be made that that does apply across the board.
In terms of design, but not from the...
And I think you make a great argument for both Bellevue, so Bellevue, Newport, Covington, Dayton, with 6,000 people, Cincinnati, all have historic experts as consultant, either sitting on their design review boards, or as consultants to the design review boards. So my understanding, and I'm being a bit different, is that, taking the federal register out of it, because everything that you said is my understanding of the federal register, but that doesn't apply to protection, so I'm just going to take that out. When we're looking at local protected districts, my understanding is, as a district, contributing, non-contributing, whatever, as a district, we can have a historic designation. We've had people in town look at all the housing up here.
You can, yeah, I mean, you can designate whatever you want to call it, but it doesn't really have any standing in terms of historic significance in the eyes of the state and the feds.
Exactly. And so what I'm saying to you, but my understanding is, we have two different animals here. We have the federal animal, where you get money, and then we have the local area. So our local government can, we have a Kentucky...
You just have to have a rational basis on what's historic and what isn't, that's all.
And again, I mean, I think this is a perfect argument for, let's get a historic consultant here in Fort Thomas, everybody else has one. Why we don't have one actually just blows my mind, but we don't. So hopefully, and, you know, we don't need one full-time, Newport has one full-time, Bellevue has one full-time, Covington has one, you know, one, more than one in Covington. So, you know, to get a person like that in Fort Thomas, we don't even have to have these kinds of discussions. But going back, if you all would like, Beth Johnson, I'm sure she would come in in a couple of months and talk to you about these specific issues. She talked to council. And like I said, the Cincinnati Preservation Association will provide training, where all of these particular issues could be brought up. I just was concerned last month, Dave, to be honest with you, and it was stuff you were saying, that it seemed to me that perhaps you wanted to use the national federal register to take protection away from downtown.
No, no, that's the only thing to do with downtown, is just make sure that if we're going to do the historic district, it would align geographically.
You know, that's what you get, that's up to you all, however you want to do that. But I would ask you, before you do any of that, to get a historical consultant here to help with these kinds of decisions.
I agree.
And Paige Jack, I know Matt Kramer has indicated to me that that's something that's in the, in the works. He would like to get through this process first, but then, once this concludes, I think that's on his plate for attacking, taking a look at, perhaps, going right down to the past you're talking about.
Yeah, my concern is, it was brought to council the other night, so I think you may have changed this course to council the other night, someone got up and talked about their concern that you guys are making these big-ticket decisions, the design review board's making these big-ticket decisions, without having the adequate, and Dave, it sounds like, I mean, you know more than I'll ever know, but I'm not sure that everybody's on that same page. And again, I think we're talking about maybe two different animals of the two. The other issue that I'm not sure came up last month or not, but it seemed to, is the height of the buildings in the CBDs. Is that thing brought up yet, Lisa?
No, that... That would be part of the discussion on June 5th.
But these guys won't be here, that'll be with...
It's gonna be a combined, our hope is that it will be a combined meeting between the planning commission and council, and that will be one of the issues to be discussed.
So one of the things I just want to bring to you, our attention, you know, we know now what 50 feet looks like. You know, One Highland is the only 50-foot building that we have.
40-foot.
I think it's, I'm pretty sure it's 50. You're not...
It's 50?
Yeah. So what I want to, so I look out over the CBD, over at the Uptown, and One Highland is one story higher than, and I can tell you, I can sit up, if you don't, wait until you come to my bedroom, you can look at, see it, One Highland is one story higher than everything else up there. So now that we know what it looks like, I would just ask you to bring the height of the buildings down, so to match the rest of the CBD. The design review guidelines do, do have in there that the building has to be similar height, similar proportion, that, you know, whatever, I don't know why that didn't happen with One Highland, but I would ask of consideration is that, Alisa told us in one of our Thursday meetings about how high it would be to have one story of commercial and one story of residential. So Alisa, Alisa, do you remember what that was?
I mean, so we talked about, you know, basic floor heights. So typically, upper-store floor heights are about 12 to 13 feet. The first floor is, depending upon the use, could be anywhere from 13 to 15 feet. So, you know, you're looking at, if you wanted to only have a two-story building, your max height could be potentially something like 40 feet, as opposed to 50.
So, and I think the complaint that I hear the most felt One Highland is too big, too tall, you know, for the area. So I would just ask you to consider bringing the height restriction down in the...
Yeah. Thank you.
I just have a very quick question, and that is, the meeting on June 5th, I believe you said it was? If that's a, that is not the normal, I don't believe, the normal night for a city council?
It is. Well, it is for June. So June and September, I think there's two council meetings. It's not the normal night, but I think June is different, there's two, two meetings in June, and I think two meetings in September. So it is a normal council meeting, in that case.
Joe, and the reason there are two in June is the past budget.
My question was related to if it's a special meeting? Because in one of our Thursday sessions with Alisa, when she was telling us about this meeting coming up, and the people who were there were glad, and asked if there would be public comments, and she said, well, certainly there would be. But a special meeting, they always say, no public comments allowed. And I'm asking for clarification on will public comments be entertained at the June 5th meeting?
I'll have to check with Matt and see, you know, I don't know for sure, but we'll have to have that discussed.
But you're saying it's not a special meeting, it's just...
It's a regularly-scheduled council.
So then I think, okay, so that...
Then would you know there's always two?
That would indicate to me that it would be public comment permitted, as opposed to a special meeting. That's my reason for asking, if it's special or normal.
It's a regularly-scheduled meeting. Now, what I'll check, and I'll give with you, it may, the only thing that may be on the agenda would be the budget issue, but I'll check and find out. Does that make sense?
No. I mean, I understand the words, but to have a whole discussion with the planning zoning being there, and not have any community, people, people in the community, and then those of us who keep coming, keep going on Thursday, which is so great, I mean, I live for those Thursday meetings, and people that can't come.
Well, I'm sorry, what's the question?
Will we be able to ask a question?
And I'll find out if, if, there are two meetings in June, one of them typically, the only issue that's there to be dealt with is passing the budget. I'll find out which one, and I'll let you know. Does that make sense?
Unless the answer's no, that makes no sense, because...
Well, we'll have to let you know, because we don't have an answer. I mean, we don't have an answer.
I said I understood that.
Well, I would caution you that typically, if you have, if you have a, just a public planning commission meeting, you have to allow public comment, so...
I mean, these, this is not a public hearing.
I thought the hearing...
No, no, I mean, it's a public hearing, either it's other specific advertising requirements, but even for a typical planning commission, you're supposed to allow public comment.
Okay.
So just make that...
We'll, we'll...
If it's an official public...
Right, and I, that's just, and I, we'll figure out that idea.
And before I...
We're just invited, and we're not at quorum, and it's...
And before I leave the podium, I apologize for using the same tone that someone from the DRB used a month ago at the meeting. It was inexcusable then, it's inexcusable tonight, and I do apologize.
Good odds you can adjourn.
Sorry? So we're, thank you for everybody coming this evening.